The Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to do the roll call.
Mayor Barbaria.
Here.
Mr. Didich.
Yeah.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Matt.
Presence.
Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Bonakin.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Candiano, and our board attorney, although not participating, is here, Ms. Duncan.
All right, we actually have, we're going to open this meeting to the general public. Is there anybody here who has something they wish to bring to the attention of the board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we move on. We have a resolution, application number 23:508. Has everybody had a chance to look that over? I know that that's the boutique hotel. Do I have somebody willing to offer the resolution for approval?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the resolution for application number 23:508, Interstate Office Center, LP 8, Wood Hollow Road, blocks 736.1, Lot 1, Zone SED 5, OVL 7. Preliminary and final major site plan for a boutique hotel.
Do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. That moves us on to our agenda for tonight. We have application 23:512, Morris County Parks Commission, 793 Green Bank Road, Block 400, Lot 1, courtesy review to construct a trail around the Booton Reservoir. So, who do we have before us tonight?
Sure, my name is Peter Karas, and I'm Vice President for Parks and Stewardship at the Open Space Institute.
And I'm Mary Pace Goldman with Riffled Waters Engineering, the professional engineer for the project.
And I'm Russ Velter, Manager of Park Projects, Morris County Park Commission.
All right, this is a courtesy review, and I, do we need to have our witnesses sworn in?
Not a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just let us know who, what you are testifying as.
Sure, so, Open Space Institute is acting as agent for Morris County Parks Commission under agreement. Morris County Parks Commission is the applicant for this courtesy review, and they're looking to develop this Booton Reservoir Trail Project as a leasing to the City of Jersey City, who owns the property.
All right.
So, agreements are in place, a lot of players.
Who are you and what is your role in this?
Sure, so, again, I'm Peter Karas, I'm Vice President for Parks and Stewardship at Open Space Institute.
I apologize, what was your last name?
Karas, K-A-R-I-S.
Okay, thank you.
And it is through the Parks Program at OSI that we're working in partnership with the Morris County Parks Commission to do all of the pre-development work for this proposed project. Right now, we're currently at the tail end of that, of that pre-development project, and we'd love to give you a short little presentation and then get into some details on the proposed parking, which is the subject of the courtesy review for, for the planning board.
All right, and just, just for my own.
Sure.
Enlightenment, none of you are here as land use professionals, neither a lawyer nor a planner, you're here to simply testify to what the plan is.
So, I'm a licensed professional engineer, so I did the design plan, so I'm here as a professional.
Excellent.
And I am actually a registered landscape architect within the state of New York.
Okay, this is a courtesy review.
Lucky enough to work in conservation. Yeah, so, thank you again, the Booton Reservoir Protection and Trail Project is, is been a longstanding vision, I think, for this area, and we've been lucky enough to, if you work with some, some great folks, to try and bring this to the finish line and open up this thousand acre property right in the center of Parsippany Troy Hills and, and the township of Booton to the public. Just a brief history of our involvement, we were able to negotiate between Morris County Parks Commission and Jersey City an aforementioned lease to develop and operate public trail around the Booton Reservoir in February of 2019. As part of that lease agreement, we were required to develop a property management plan, which laid out parameters for trail design, for security and access, and for long-term management. We, we then, that property, that property management plan had a lot of participants, including the town of Parsippany. We were working with the current mayor's office, also with the police department and the fire department, and the, forgive me, the office of emergency management. So, all of those town agencies and folks fed into the property management plan, which then adopted by Jersey City as required by the lease. We then went to the, the design development and the permit process, and in August of 2022, we perfected wetland permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection through a pretty arduous process, but we managed to get through that with the proper permits in hand. And because this is a watershed property, it's actually the terminal reservoir for the water supply for the city of Jersey City, any activities associated with the land needed to approval from the New Jersey Watershed Property Review Board, which is a state agency made up of commission DEP, several commissioners, high-level commissioners in the state, and we were able to secure that approval in October of 2022. Those were the two real big hurdle, permit hurdles for the project. We then went through further design development, working through the parking areas, and that is the subject of our appearance here, is to, is to have you guys review the proposed trailhead. So, a little bit more about the project. Overall, it's a 7.7 mile pedestrian trail, a foot trail around the reservoir. It has two major entry points, one on Green Bank Drive, right in the vicinity of Booton Dam, and, and all the infrastructure around that dam area, and then a secondary access on the, up at Parsippany Boulevard, right across from the reservoir cabin, in an old staging area when they were constructing the bridge, so previously disturbed area. But it's within the fence line of the reservoir, meaning it's inside the road system that surrounds it, which is great for access because then no one has to cross the road. So, those are the two access points. It's a four-phase project. Phase one includes a trailhead at Green Bank Drive and about 3.2 miles of trail running along eastern, back eastern edge of the reservoir, in the southern end. It's essentially an existing maintenance road around the reservoir through phase one. So, with the modest improvement at Green Bank Drive for a trailhead, which is approximately 40 cars, distributed in two, two distinct areas but very close proximity, that'll feed into the, the phase one, which includes a beautiful entry gate, kiosk, and wayfinding signage, and then some scenic overlooks that'll have some interpretation about the reservoir history or ecology, to-be-determined themes of interpretation throughout, throughout the project. Phase two, shown in purple, we call the Booton Section, will develop the second trailhead, and two phase, two, two sections of the trail, one going to the north, along the northern boundary of the reservoir, to a beautiful viewpoint, and then one going south, again, to another prominent viewpoint looking across the reservoir. Phase two is intended to be ADA accessible, which is a great feature of the trail, we believe. Phase one will be universally accessible, although not ADA. The entry trail is just the space we have to work within the secure area of the reservoir. It's going to be a little tricky, we're going to try and get there. Phase three is around the dam proper, and includes a replacement of an old historic bridge that was on the down slope side of the, of the dam spillway. It's a 120-foot bridge, and it'll connect phases one and two. And then phase four on the western slope is, is the most remote, and I would say the most rugged, includes four pedestrian bridges and a vast majority of the water protection areas that are included in the project. There's several inputs into the reservoir, especially coming from the 287 corridor, that are unmitigated from stormwater management perspective. This project includes improvements to improve the water quality of the inputs coming into the reservoir. So, top of mind in this whole project is protecting water quality, protecting the security of the reservoir while providing that public access. So, with that, with that background, I'll turn it over to Mary to talk more specifically about the parking areas and stormwater.
Thank you. So, the parking lot at Parsippany Boulevard is a total land disturbance of 0.85 acres. Parsippany Boulevard's parking lot is a total of half an acre, roughly 0.53 acres of impervious surfaces for that parking facility. We currently have 32 regular spaces and two handicap spaces proposed at the Parsippany Boulevard location.
If you could hold up just a second, should we be marking these as, as evident, Mary, for the purposes of this?
No.
Not necessary?
Not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just going to point to help.
Yeah, so, we have a single stormwater management feature for that facility, which is a infiltration basin. We did do soil testing and infiltration testing at both locations for the parking. At Green Bank Drive, we did not have any infiltration capacity, and we had a shallow water table, but at Parsippany Boulevard, we were able to have infiltration, so we proposed an infiltration stormwater basin. It is a green infrastructure stormwater management facility, because the drainage area is less than the two and a half acres under the New Jersey Stormwater Management Manual, and that facility will be planted with native vegetation consisting of shrubs, inkberry, and chokeberry, and a series of wildflowers like purple cone flower, black-eyed susan, milkweed, and aster. Those were all approved native plantings that originally we submitted to DEP, but there are no DEP regulated wetlands or wetland buffers or floodplains at the Parsippany Boulevard parking area location. We made sure that we stayed out of all those regulated zones when we laid out that parking area. We did place the Parsippany Boulevard parking area in such a way that we would limit tree clearing. We do have to do some tree clearing at that location just because of the entrance and exit pathways into the parking lot itself, but we did minimize those, and we are replanting that same number of trees adjacent to the parking lot in an area that is also cleared to offset the tree removal. So, that's Parsippany.
The only thing I'd add on Parsippany is that we, during the DEP process, we've moved all the impervious areas and disturbance outside of the 300-foot controls zone around the perimeter of the reservoir.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and with that, I don't believe we have anything else need to highlight on the Parsipony Boulevard, right?
The only other comments that were included in some of the memos were regarding lighting and, and kind of operational.
Screen.
And vegetative screening. So, during the property management plan process, working with the security folks, you know, visibility was of high importance, so the parking areas were placed as close to the roads as possible with open views from a security standpoint, from both police department and the dam reservoir operator. There is no proposed site lighting in this, the, these lots will be closed at night. Someone will come around and close the gates, but we do need to see inside from the road just from the safety and patrol standpoint. That goes, goes, the same goes for landscaping. We, we did try to locate these, these parking areas in areas that, that there's not adjacent residences, so we envision just low plantings in the stormwater area, but really, we want to be able to see into the parking lot, so, so everything's low, grass and low plantings associated with stormwater. So, from a management perspective, this is a kind of a dawn-to-dusk operation. Gates will be closed at night and will be patrolled daily, split between the local authorities and the Morris County Park Police. And if there's any more detailed questions, Russ can really answer really the operational aspects of, as we get into construction.
Yeah, I wanted to pause on that, the Parsippany Boulevard, because Green Bank is a separate feature, but I think we could take questions really on Parsippany now if anyone has any for that parking facility.
I think it's best if we go through the entire program unless there.
Okay.
You know, before we start asking questions.
Sure, sounds good.
You know, the, the only question that I have at this point is that I've been on a lot of trailheads, and I've run, I've done a lot of hiking, and you're going to close the gate, and there are going to be hikers who are going to still have their car in the parking lot when you close the gate. I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah.
Understood.
All right, so then, moving to Green Bank Drive, that's a total land disturbance of 0.94 acres, a total of 0.38 acres of new impervious surfaces, primarily because for Green Bank Drive, we're utilizing some existing driveways into the Jersey City facilities. So, at the southern end, there's a parking facility that is in the existing grass median between the two entrance and exit driveways. We wanted to sort of utilize that as best we could to take advantage of those existing driveways, adding in, in that location, 29 regular spaces and two handicap spaces. And then the northern parking area along Green Bank utilizes the driveway entrance to the north, which is also to another Jersey City reservoir facility, and that has a total of 16 regular spaces and one handicap space. From a stormwater management standpoint, for the stormwater in the island median, we are primarily treating that, at that northern area with a bioretention basin. Again, we ran soil testing there and infiltration testing, and we could not make infiltration work, the soils were hydrologic soil group C and D, and the groundwater table is just too shallow, so we proposed bioretention with an underdrain system. There's an existing storm sewer system there that we will connect the discharge from the basin into. That, again, will be planted with native vegetation. And then we have two Filterra-manufactured treatment devices located in the southern parking facility, and that is, those were sized, designed for the New Jersey Water Quality Design Storm, the 1.25 inches over two-hour design storm, and then that ultimately connects into the bioretention system for the water quantity treatment. So, that's the stormwater facility there, and those were taking advantage of what we could from those existing facilities working within Jersey City's property. And we went through both the engineer and planners' reports. I know we have written responses from the Parks Commission for the engineering report for items one and two in that report. The first one was the applicant should provide testimony regarding the use of proposed facilities, hours of operation, and whether lighting is proposed. No lighting is proposed in the parking areas or along the trails, but they do list detailed hours of operation, and the trail mix standards are listed in this written document, which I know Russell has copies that we could leave with you guys on that. Item two was regarding.
Could you just specify the hours of operation, just?
Sure, it says parking lots at Green Bank Drive and Parsippany Boulevard will be gated and opened at 7:00 AM and locked at dusk or sunset.
I'm going to suggest you consider saying it's closing a half an hour before dusk, but you can still say you're going to lock, close, and lock at dusk.
Okay.
That just gives people no, no this.
That sounds good.
Having, having been on many trails where people are having a tough time getting back to their cars.
I think that's good feedback, yeah. Also, no pets are going to be allowed, that's listed here, and no access for fishing, swimming, or boating are going to be permitted. I believe that's all part of Parks plans.
That's all part of the lease.
And that's all part of the lease agreement, too. The second item in the engineer's report said the applicant should provide testimony regarding the estimated construction start, duration, hours of operation, and phasing. We did touch on the four phases when Peter was providing his testimony as part of phase one and before the trail can be opened to the public. There are several dam security improvements that have to be completed. Those are being funded by a federal community projects grant, and includes additional fencing, vehicle, and pedestrian gates, camera system, and security lighting by the dam itself. And then it says, "Park Commission will allocate funding in its 2024 Park Improvement Trust Budget. Construction could begin in early winter as the weather permits." So, that's sort of the general timeline for starting construction.
And that would be for phase one.
Right, starting with phase one. Yeah, we've had a lot of meetings with Jersey City's facilities about security and sort of what they want to do with camera systems, lighting, and fencing, and that's fairly involved.
They're doing a major upgrade to their systems currently, so we've done our planning to tie right into those new systems. So, the cameras will be operated by the dam operator, along with the security gates for vehicles.
Item three was regarding Green Bank Drive and whether it was subject to DEP approval. No wetlands, wetland transition areas, or floodplains or state open waters are located in the vicinity of Green Bank Drive, so it was out of any regulated area, and we can provide the board with copies of the DEP approvals that we received for the project. Item four was regarding peak flow reductions for stormwater. We do comply with that fully, and we can provide the updated peak rate discharge comparison table and stormwater report for that. Item five.
Discharge rates.
Oh, yeah, that's the discharge rates, yeah. And item four was saying that they would be major development projects, which they are, because both involve more than a quarter acre of new impervious surface. Number six was regarding an infiltration basin or a rain garden at Parsippany Boulevard. It's, it's a small-scale infiltration basin, which functions very similar to a rain garden, but it's technically a small-scale infiltration basin, so we can clarify that. Item seven was regarding traffic signage and markings at Parsippany Boulevard parking lot, to be consistent with Green Bank Drive. The Parsippany Boulevard parking lot facility also needs to go through approval from Morris County for the road opening permit for that new driveway, because it will be its own new driveway, so we will definitely comply with all markings and requirements that they need us to at that location. Item eight was regarding adding dimensions to the parking spaces. We did check to confirm that it complies with the township's ordinances as well as the county standards, and we can add those dimensions to the spaces and, and the travelways. Item nine was regarding sidewalks connecting to the two parking areas along Green Bank Drive, and that those should be included in the land disturbance, we can update that to include those. The applicant should indicate if the proposed bioretention systems will be planted with appropriate vegetation, then, as I mentioned before, that'll be the native shrubs and wildflowers. All right, and then the planner letter, can go through that.
Really, it was, it was great to see that, that the activity's consistent, township's master planning. Comment A, applicant's asked to address landscaping and screening along the front of the parking areas, we touched upon that earlier with security being paramount. We'll have low vegetation in the stormwater, but we didn't purposely did not plant trees or any large shrubs for screening. Second one was wetlands, we should confirm there's no wetlands or wetlands buffer in the parking areas, we can confirm that, and we actually pulled it outside of all the regulated areas associated with the reservoir. Next one was, is there any proposed lighting? The answer is no. Fourth one was trees, if existing trees are proposed to be removed, as, as Mary said, there are, look, two dozen.
About two dozen trees at Parsippany Boulevard.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight trees that are coming out of Parsippany, and we're going to be replacing those in kind in the previously disturbed area, and applicants ask to provide testimony to the extent of proposed improvements incorporate sustainable or green infrastructure principles.
Yes, and all of the stormwater features proposed under the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual are green infrastructure BMPs. With the manufactured treatment devices, the small-scale bioretention basin, and small-scale infiltration basin, they're all green infrastructure BMPs.
And the last comment recommending connecting the sidewalk to the existing sidewalk going to the north, which goes down to the existing pedestrian bridge, so we will definitely add that in.
At Parsippany Boulevard.
Although at Parsippany Boulevard, that was going to be our primary entrance into the trail, we've been able to, and the parking lot was going to be offline. Parking lot's now on, online, and you can access right into the main trail and not have to go down to the existing bridge if you don't want to, but getting down to that existing bridge when the trail's closed is important because that's an open future between Parsippany and Booton.
And one other thing just to note, we have all permits in hand except for the Morris County Soil Conservation District approval, and then the Morris County road opening permit for Parsippany Boulevard.
So, with that, we would, we'd be happy to field questions and see more input.
I'm going to start by asking our planner if there's anything that you see that.
No, you addressed my questions as far as consistency, as my report says. The master plan does specifically address the reservoir and working with the county and Jersey City to make that a public use, so, right on track there. The only thing I'm curious about is what, what's the projected visitor rate going to be?
Well, that's interesting. I'm going to turn to Ross.
Yeah. I'll go to somebody else. I'm not sure.
You really don't know at this point, so we have no idea if the parking will be sufficient or if it may in the future.
I might be able to answer that question. Since I became the mayor again in 2022, now, I started this off with Mr. Finn Wentworth when he came to my office, well, he didn't come to my office, I went to his office, and I pretty much bragged about my Parsippany Hills High School state championship ring, and then he showed me his Yankee World Series ring, so you know how much I went down that level. That being said, this is something that we've been eyeing since, I think, 2016, 15?
Yeah.
Yeah, 16, and.
I'm going to throw something in here, I had a long chat with Mimi about this in 2001.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, that being said, when I became the mayor again, I've been getting hit a lot on Facebook, on Parsippany supporting our town, how many, I can tell you how many residents are looking forward to this, to become to fruition, because no one's, it's never been open to reservoir. I mean, and I'm not going to say when we were kids what we did, but that's beside the point. We got in there somehow.
That's currently going on.
Yeah, that goes on.
But I can tell you, this is like, it's, it's, it's going to be a really great project for the township, for the surrounding township of Booton, and, and for the community in itself, and, you know, everything takes time, as we know, I mean, I'm kind of happy that, you know, even though I wasn't mayor for those four years, it was something that I wanted to see happen even within those four years, but, you know, when COVID hit, I'm sure that slowed things down. But I, I really see there's going to be a lot of, you know, good traffic coming here. A lot of the residents here in Parsippany are really looking forward to this project. I can tell you, as the mayor, I'm looking forward to it. In fact, I'm going to take pictures tonight of, I have that same rendition in my office, and I'm going to post it on Facebook saying, you know, we had a courtesy review, and it's going to spark a lot of interest.
Members of the board, questions? Gordon?
A couple of kind of maybe suggestions or thoughts on some of the parking.
Sure.
On Green Bank Road, I'm looking at the parking lot, and there's a whole lot of wheel stops shown here. Wheel stops, I mean, my experience, they're, they're trip hazards often and maintenance nightmares.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, like, is there like a need to even have them? And if not, what about potentially putting an island in there instead? Like a small island?
In the, you mean in between the two.
In between the two, right, where you, where you see a lot of wheel stops.
We could probably consider an island there, I think the wheel stops were, were added as a response to some initial feedback from, I think it was feedback actually from the county when they were reviewing both parking lots, even though they, there's no. lots, even though they, there's no road opening permit for them at that location. But I, I'd be open to revisiting an island there, and it's, I don't think it's subject, I know it's not subject actually to Morris County permitting at that location.
If, if it's an island, the upside is it's a little less impervious.
Absolutely.
And, you know, cars are overhanging, it's no big deal. That's, the whole purpose is for cars not overhang.
Right.
The downside is it might affect your drainage, that's the only.
Yeah.
I think you're right, and it does drain across slopes, so we'll have to create some openings.
A little bit of a curb cut.
Brakes in that island so that water can-
That's fine, I just-
No, that's a good point. I like that.
And the, I mean, it's a minor detail, but the crosswalk you have across Green Bank Road, I mean, you've got the sign, it's double faced, but it's only on one side.
Yeah.
People would expect to see it on both sides, drivers. And if you could, on Parsipony Road, I'd suggest putting crosswalk signs at the main entrance walkway. The only reason is, I mean, at some point, the striping could be faded or covered with snow or something. So, but I do appreciate the fact you're using high visibility crosswalks, thanks.
Okay, good.
Those are great comments, thank you. You can definitely add more signage.
Yeah.
Safety is key here.
I, I'm more concerned about like Green Bank Road, mid, like non-intersection crosswalks are really unexpected by the drivers.
Yeah, and people travel pretty quick on that one, so it would be better.
Signage and the striping work together is the bottom line, and I'd rather make sure it's on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I like that, thanks.
Other members of the board have, Mr. DeDeeche?
Mr. Chairman, so I know you covered about the security aspect of it. A couple of quick questions on that. So how are those cameras will be operated? Who's monitoring on those aspects?
Well, the cameras will be tied right into the dam operator's system, so they're essentially their cameras. But they're, it's all built into whatever upgrades they're making. I don't know the specs.
Okay, but there will be staff looking at it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There's no point, right?
Yeah, they have that in particular as part of upgrades that New Jersey DEP's dam safety section is requiring for the high hazard dam. And then also just sort of pre-planning, knowing that pedestrians are going to be coming in close proximity to several of high security features of the dam. They wanted to install additional cameras to monitor pedestrian use in that area.
Yep, and more from my knowledge, right? So let's say 5:30 is closing time, the two cars still there, what's the process to, you know, get everybody out? Yeah.
There is no, there is no park police anymore. There are members of the, of the sheriff's department. So they would come, if there's still cars there, I don't think they would lock it right away. They would kind of come back. We have that problem at, at some of our other parks. But eventually, you know, they're going to lock the gate, they're not going to leave it open, and I don't know if they'll leave a note or there's going to be signs that they can call the sheriff's department and they'll come back because we have patrols all the time, they can come back and let them out. So the gate won't stay open. I mean, if, you know, if you, if there's a sign there, you're going to close at, you know, the suggestion may be a half hour before. So we give them that extra half hour, you know. Now, the cars, you know, here's not too bad, but I know like a Mailer Dickinson or Jefferson or something, you know, it's still there the next day, you start getting a little concerned that maybe they're wandering around the park and, you know, because there's 5,000 acres there. So, but yeah, if they'll, they're not, if there's cars there, I don't see them locking it right away. They'll come back and, and give them a chance, and if not, then they'll, then they'll lock it up and the people can call.
Okay, and just again, just out of curiosity, will there be any public announcement system along with the cameras, like to, to, to call those people back in or, you know, announce that, hey, park is closing, you need to get out, those kind of things?
No, no, we don't have that anywhere. We don't do that anywhere. We provide enough signage and, you know, our rules are posted, so, you know, we expect people-
Self-monitored, yeah?
Yeah.
Self-disciplined, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And real quick, I don't know if it's, we already know, but how is the cell phone reception in that whole trail? That could be one basic safety feature, right? Yeah.
I think it works on the whole loop trail, so I've walked that loop trail a bunch of times over the last five or six years, and I don't think I've ever lost cell signal anywhere in there.
That's critical, yeah. Thank you so much.
Pretty close to 287, so-
Yeah, on, yeah, on the phase four side, you're really close to the highway, although the sound is deadened by all the massive trees over there, so it's surprisingly quiet considering how close you are to the highway.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's a great project. I was sold when you started off, you know, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other members of the public have, not public, of the board have questions of this at this time? Other members of the public who have questions of this witness, for these witnesses at this time? Yes, sir? If you could come forward, identify yourself and-
Hi, Earl Hoffker, Lake Hiawatha. And the only thing I've seen that really concerns me is why they're not going to have it open for fishing. It's a great place to fish. I fished it in the 60s and the 70s. It's just fantastic for fishing, and it's really a waste of that natural beauty that we have there to not open it to fishing. If, if there's a really good reason why, I'd like to understand why.
I'm going to say that it's not in our purview, but they can tell you why.
During, during the lease negotiations, you know, Jersey City was very sensitive to actual, the actual contact with the water. So, and similar to blocking the dogs and, and, you know, that waste that comes with that, they, they really limited the use to, to very passive, non-motorized, human-only traffic. And they, they, they just said no to any access to the water, swimming, boating, like just nothing.
Well, if I had just mentioned, they had it open for fishing by permit, and they charged for permits. And I can understand they don't want boats in there, and I can even understand they don't want you to wade into the water. The liability factor's there, but it worked before. I don't know why they don't see it can work again.
You could probably take it up with the Jersey City reservoir people. That's, that's outside of our remit. So any other members of the public have any questions in this, these witnesses, this testimony? Hearing and seeing none? Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Neely?
Along Route 46, on the westbound side of 46, where would the trail be? Would it be up at the, where there's a wall extending across the top, which would allow visual of the reservoir?
That's a great question. We tried that and they rejected any intersection with the dike.
So where would the trail be down at the-
It'd be down at the toe of the slope where the existing travelway is. We actually considered building an observation tower where you could, you could climb up and get that view, and because they didn't, they also did not want us doing any excavation at the toe of the impoundment. So they were really sensitive to that southern area and just made us stay on the existing travelway.
Thank you.
We tried. Because you're right, it's a great, incredible view.
Great visual.
They actually have us adding fencing in that area, too, to keep people from climbing up the slope of the dike because of the dam's security again.
Thank you.
An awful lot of young goslings in that area usually, although I haven't noticed as many this year.
So regardless, there's also, there's also, I'll mention, there's also an eagle nest on the west side, and we actually had to make, the eagle actually moved their nest during design, and we had to make an adjustment to the trail, and we lost one of our scenic overlooks on, on the west side to accommodate, to accommodate the eagle's new nest. Which is a much better, it's a much better view.
That eagle flew about 20 feet over my house, one, one time. It's the only time I'd seen it, but it was amazing.
I think there's a picture of that eagle-
Really?
Sitting on the roof of the town hall.
Well, he lives in the, he lives in the saddle of 287 and all that, always, so it's just, you know, but we had to stay away.
Yep, no, my son, my son bought a house in Maryland and he discovered an eagle's nest in the backyard, so they spent the spring viewing the eagle and the baby. So, in any case, what else do we need to know? I believe I'm satisfied. All right, any, any comments? I mean, because we're going to have to vote on whether we find this consistent with the master plan or not. You did talk about the, the fact that there's going to be a wheelchair accessible portion of the trail. Is that going to be paved over? Is that going to be?
No, it'll be a natural surface, but the grades and width will be ADA. So these are very flat, and, and the width will be, be able to pass. I would imagine that section might be stone dust. We've seen it's kind of a crusher fine section, but for the most part, it's natural surface.
It'd be about, there's about two miles of trail that's ADA, so.
Right, that's the section that goes into Booton, Phase Two.
Interesting, okay, because I know in 2001, there was a little bit of discussion about using a new piece of property that Parsipony had purchased to be an ADA parking lot, and that there would be a paved path directly out to the reservoir so that wheelchairs could actually go right on that paved path. But that was 2001, this is 2023, the world is a little different.
Yeah.
So, any other comments? Is there somebody willing, I guess, any comments from the public on this application at this time, either in favor or opposed? Hearing and seeing none? This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Do I have any, anybody willing to make a motion that this plan is consistent with our master plan?
Mr. Meth, Mr. Von Aiken?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Wow, we get a shot tonight. We always give you preference, though. Okay. I'll go ahead and make a, a motion that application 23:512 from the Morris County Parks Commission for 793 Green Bank Road, Block 400, the courtesy review to construct a trail around the Booton Reservoir is consistent with our master plan.
Second.
Is there anything else we need to add that you can think of?
Do we need any of the notes from Mr. Meth's comments?
I mean, it is courtesy review, and if they heard the comments, I'm fine without.
Well, as I understand it, for a courtesy review, our planner is going to simply send a note indicating that she believes that it's consistent, or that the, the board has found that it's consistent with the master plan.
Correct. Or Nora.
Or Nora, okay.
Representative from the board will, something else, I don't know that it is consistent.
That sounds fair and reasonable. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mayor Barbario, thank you very much. Nora, would you call for the vote?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDeeche.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Meth.
Yes. So, thank you for the delightful presentation. I'm looking forward, I'm planning already to hike the entirety of the trail once it's, once it's done. We can have a, a planning board hike around, around-
It's a hike, it's a good hike.
Well, seven miles is a good distance, yeah. It's a good distance.
It's 7.7. If you, if you go the right way, you can make it 10, which would qualify for Boy Scout hiking badge requirements.
You got your troop ready?
I'm getting them ready. I will.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate your, your working with us and your attention. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else that needs to come before this board at this time? Nora, do you have anything?
Nothing further.
Any members have anything that needs to come before us? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a second. Anybody who wants to stay here overnight?